Hello, can you hear me?
Yes ma'am.
Yes, we can hear you Sarah.
Yes, I can as well.
Oh, is this like a different version? Of a meeting? I don't have the same controls I usually do. I'm not going to be able to share documents or anything. Is there a way to promote me to a panelist?
Yeah, I just reached out to Joe, Ms. Smiley.
Okay.
Use the link.
Join as panelists here.
Yep.
Okay. Can y'all hear me?
Yes ma'am.
Yes.
Okay. And I can't turn on my video now.
Yeah, I'm prevented from starting video also.
Okay, everyone should be able to set the video now.
Okay. For the delay. Um, welcome. So I think I heard everyone. I heard Will, Andre, Dr. Merrill, Neil, Franklin. Hi, everybody. Okay. That goes to show I should log in more than three minutes early to make sure that I have all the access. Welcome, welcome. Um, and uh, I will call this meeting to order. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Um, next up are the minutes from last time. Have you all had a chance to take a look at them?
I did, but since I didn't attend, I'm gonna abstain, but I read through them to help me understand what y'all covered.
Yep. Yep. So basically, we went through an overview document that just sort of summarized what we had discussed at the previous meeting. And we got partway through reviewing the policy. And so the plan for today is to continue go through the rest of the red line edits that Neil had made to the policy. We, at the end of that meeting, talked about the internal versus external staffing models and went out to get a little bit more information. So I think Dr. Marilyn and I will have some information about that and then figure out where to go from there. So. Um. Alright, um. Andre, do you want a motion to approve this?
Yep, so moved.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor in approving the meeting minutes. Aye.
Aye.
And Will is gonna abstain because he wasn't there.
Yes.
Alright. Um, excellent. So let's next go to the policy. And just as another reminder, this is essentially the Loudoun County, Virginia policy. Oh, this is a cleaned up version that does not have the, doesn't have the red line edits in it. We should be able to pull up that version.
Look like it, hold on.
Yep. You have easy access to that Franklin.
Sure, yeah.
Awesome. Alright. So just as we're waiting for that, just a summary for Will of some of last time. So it's the Loudoun County policy. Neil had gone through and updated things according to the legalities and according to the conversation that we had had about, you know, sort of our intents. Neil, I don't know if there's anything else you want to share.
Yeah, that's right. I was, I did make some fairly substantial edits in terms of the numbers of words, but tried to really stick to the concepts in the model policy as closely as possible. The changes I made were mostly to comply with North Carolina state law and other OCS policies. And just to clarify that in some places to add further clarity to the scope and role of the ombudses committee of discuss. And I'm happy to consider whatever is helpful in terms of me providing an overview of the edits. I'm happy to do. I don't want to you know, waste your time by going over stuff you've already reviewed and writing. And I honestly can't recall where we left off in the policy last time, Sarah, but if you want to direct me to where to pick up, I can just give a quick overview if that would be helpful. Of edits I made. I'm gonna look at the red line. I don't know if Franklin's able to post it, because there we go. Because that'll show the change I made to the.
Yep.
We started.
Thanks for zooming in there Franklin. Okay, so, yes, so there's also like language stuff like Board of Education versus, you know, school division, this kind of stuff. Okay, let's scroll down. So we had the purpose. Were just simple things like that. We had this is all just legal stuff. Let's keep moving down. Oh, there's a line in here at the board's discretion. The ombuds may be an employer independent contractor. And if there is additional staffing in the office, I mean, that's like, we're, I don't think that's gonna happen, but.
Yeah, we talked about leaving you flexibility. We anticipate it's likely to be an independent contractor and just one person to start, but you could go with in-house hiring and you could have a whole department and ombud at some point. So this gives you flexibility there.
Yep. Okay, can we keep scrolling Franklin?
So Sarah, I'm looking at the cleaned up version and I think it's on page two. Um, and I don't know if we're.
Yep, so Franklin put up the cleaned up version here.
Okay, on page two Franklin, if you go down, um, keep going down. Geez, uh. Oh, it says mine says physically page two of five, and it's the first top sentences that was from the attachment in the meeting. Yeah, um, no, mine says page two, so go one up. One page up. Keep going. Okay, stop. Uh, go down a little bit. Yeah, so here's something that I'm concerned with. Neil, I think I understand what it's trying to say, but I think it's way too broad. It says "In the event the board authorize additional staffing in the office of ombudsman, whether as employee or independent contract, the ombudsman shall have authority to manage such staff independently from control, limitation, influence, or interference by any OCS board member or employee." Shouldn't we say within the legal laws or something that limitation? The independently controlled limitation. I'm concerned with that word limitation. I think we want to bound this within our, they have to follow obviously our policies, any legal laws and things like that. I'm just worried that that word limitation. We are not empowering them to not follow our policies, right? So I, that was the only thing in this section that I saw that I was like, wait a second, can we, can we put some guide rails around it? I agree with the you know, the board's part and employee, but I wanted to make sure we just put some guardrails around it.
Oh, you're on mute, Neil. Sorry.
You just muted yourself.
Yeah, thanks. I'm just catching up with you here while I'm reviewing the language. I think I do think that somewhere we have I mean, the idea here is that operationally, the ombuds is not under the direct control of board members or the superintendent. You want the ombuds to be independent in the sense that ombuds are, that's the nature of the position. But you're right, it doesn't, there's no intent to say that you're exempt from board policy or anything. I'm not trying to read it that way, but we could add some language somewhere to clarify that that's not the intent. I'd have to do that.
Yeah, if there's a generic statement that we can have somewhere else that independent of the policy set forth, you're bound by legal, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm good with that. I just read this again as reading it for the first time when I read it. I got to that and I was like, wow. I know the intent, but when, I was just worried about the word limitation, independently of limitation.
Got you. Yeah, somebody could maybe misinterpret it. What if we were to add at the end of that sentence, "Subject to all applicable laws and Board of Education policies"?
Perfect. That, that would address it perfectly.
Awesome. Alright. Um, can we go back to the blue line, red line version?
Thanks Sarah.
Yeah, awesome. That's great. Okay, um, we talked about the protection from retaliation. Okay. That may have been about as far as we got. I can't quite remember either. Um. So let's see, I think we could do two things here. One is we could go bit by bit. Um, and you know, ask questions as the board has them if we've, if we've already reviewed it. Or we could have Neil walk through and just explain things of note other than sort of like replace Loudoun County with Orange County schools and state law stuff. Maybe I would just, let's just do that version. I don't want to miss anything that might be important sort of starting from here. Neil, you're muted.
I keep doing the opposite of what I intended to do. I'd be happy to just do a high level, quick overview and you tell me if you want to slow down and dive in.
Awesome.
So we're picking up where again?
I think here in the standards of practice, yeah.
Okay. Alright, so standards of practice, let me see. Okay, this is an important section, right? I really didn't change a lot in terms of what Loudoun Policy Substantially was doing. I think basic concepts here are that that the Office of Ombuds services are entirely voluntary. No one can be required to communicate with them. That's uh, the ombuds does not communicate directly with board members or OCS staff who refer an individual to them. They just deal with the person who gets the referral. So you know, if an employee comes to a board member with a concern, the board member refers them to the ombudsman, it's confidential at that point. There's not updates to the board member. And that I'm not gathering additional information from the board member. The, we'll talk about ways that they can assist within person or telephone or electronic communication. Reasonable steps to preserve confidentiality. I added to the extent, consistent with applicable law. Because there may be circumstances where we are required to make disclosures pursuant to court orders subpoena, that sort of thing. And I also may have added, I think, that disclosures can be made of confidential ombuds conversations if necessary to protect someone from imminent harm. If someone discloses to the ombuds that, you know, another employee's, you know, planning to assault a coworker, that's not something we can keep confidential. And also to the extent necessary to defend against, claim against the ombuds, it would be fair to ask the ombuds to keep information confidential. A person later accuses the ombuds of discrimination, for example, that the ombuds would need to be able to share the nature of the discussions to defend against a claim. Other than that, I don't think I made any material changes here in this section, but it's important.
Great.
This, Sarah, I think we talked about briefly, but it's good for Will to hear this too. On, um, the, in the section, on section D1A towards the bottom, the second to last paragraph. We have, I've sort of staked out a position that I think is defensible. I just want to make sure you all understand what, how we're drawing the line here on personnel privacy law.
Franklin, could you go up a bit? I think, uh.
Let's see where it says however.
Past A. If you go up a little bit more, okay, so, wait, yeah, there.
There we go, that's it. So, so the key distinction here, under personnel privacy laws, employees have a right to access their personal information. That would include emails and documents that wouldn't normally be placed in the paper personnel file. So I just was thinking through how to address this. This is an employee ombuds. The person who comes to the ombuds with a concern is coming to them likely with a employment concern, which is a personnel issue as to them. Where I've drawn the line, and that raises the question, well then, does that mean if there are emails between the ombuds and the employee, say the employee's got concerns, my supervisor's bullying and harassing me. And I'm not interested in filing a formal complaint at this time, but I'm interested in informal resolutions. Can you help? Now that, we want that communication to be confidential. But if it is a personnel record of the subject of the complaint, then that employee would have a right to it and that would undermine the confidentiality promise from the ombuds. So basically where I've drawn the line here is, and I think this, I think this is supportable legally, although I don't have case law on point in North Carolina. Is that the, since the ombuds does not have the power to resolve personnel issues or take personnel actions, any communication of the ombuds is not a personal record of the subject of the complaint. It is not, there is no grievance against the supervisor at this point. This is an outreach, an informal outreach. It is confidential, personal record of the person who has concerns. But only if the, if the individual were to escalate and want to pursue a formal complaint, would it be a personal record of the subject of the complaint. Does that make sense? And so that enables us to, to thread the needle where there is a personal privacy confidentiality guarantee as to the person who's communicating directly with the ombuds, but not, there's not an access right, but the last person that the employee would want that information to be shared with. I just wanted to sort of flag that. It's a, that's a significant addition, but I think it's important to be clear about those confidentiality issues.
Yep, and we talked about that last time. So Will, I don't know if you have any.
No, that, that makes sense. And I'm glad, Neil, you took the time to think through how this would work because I think that is a key element for people to feel comfortable.
Agree.
Alright, so then just, I can breeze through some of the stuff a little faster. That was just an important substantive change. On the access to records, just to flag, I think I stuck with what they already had here, but built it out a little and add in North Carolina legal references. To clarify that the ombuds does have the right to access student records. We can do that by designating them as a school official, which can be an independent contractor. It's the same, same legal basis that I can review student records to offer you guys guidance. So we're okay on that. And I've also added something again to help thread the needle on the personnel privacy and personnel record access issue. The ombud is not considered supervisory personnel and therefore does not have the right to access personnel records. The ombuds can only really receive what the individual who approaches the ombuds cares to share. The ombuds cannot, doesn't have access rights to personnel information to dig deeper. That's that last sentence in the access to records section. Neutral, neutrality and independence, I think these are just just kind of clarifying edits, nothing really substantive that I would. Yeah, I don't believe there's anything substantive here, just clarifying. Access to legal counsel. You know, you tell me if you all agree with this. I think this was my takeaway from prior discussions is you do want the ombuds to have the ability to contact our firm and get legal guidance. I have sort of set up, and we talked about there may be circumstances where it would make sense for the ombuds to have separate counsel. What if, there could be an actual or perceived conflict of interest, what if? Separate counsel, what if, there could be an actual or perceived conflict of interest, what if I or my colleagues are working on. Issues relating to the subject of the grievance, we're already advising this, the, the administration, there's a formal appeal pending, the ombuds wants to provide some. There could, it could be too close for comfort, and so what I built in here is an ability for, the ombuds. Has access to the attorney for legal guidance, because they're going to need that. Um, and if the, either the ombuds or the board attorney believes that it would be appropriate to point separate counsel. We will both give our respective, separate perspectives to the superintendent. And or board, and either the superintendent and a board can authorize separate counsel consistent with your current policies. So we're just acknowledging the possibility of actual perceived conflicts and have a mechanism to address them as they arise. Any questions about that?
Franklin, could you scroll down a bit? Where's, where's that part?
Access to legal counsel, sorry, section E, I should.
I think further, no, further down.
After, we go after access record, after neutrality and independence.
Yep.
Yep.
That's the, that's the idea with all that red. Um, and if there's no questions or concerns about that, we have the next section is on, um. I just took out some stuff that didn't really, we didn't need or didn't apply for the most part, um. And added a sentence at the end to click, we, the, the Loudon language already said that. Um. The notice to the ombuds is not notice of a formal discrimination or harassment complaint, we have to be really careful about this because they. Track deadlines and, you know, OCR or ESC would want to see that we're following policy for formal complaints. So if you, if you communicate with the ombuds, that doesn't impact those timelines and separate policies. So something for everyone to be aware of, and then I added a sentence to the end to say, nor does it toll deadlines, because I could imagine somebody thinking, well. I, I assumed I still would have extra time to file my formal complaint since I was talking to the ombuds. So, um, we could, you could take a different approach and say that deadlines are told. Um, if you want to do that, let me know, I'd have to, um, change the language here and probably language in, in multiple other policies to acknowledge the possibility of that happening. But I thought it was more straightforward to say. Um, you know, the ombuds does not, it, it's not, doesn't supersede any of your current policies on formal complaints, those deadlines still apply.
Yeah, Neil, I don't want, I would not be in favor of doing that, because I think we have a clear delineation. And the expectation would be the ombuds would, would clearly say, here's your option, and they must do it, not.
Yeah.
Because there, I mean, I, I can imagine a slippery slope on this, on, you know. You know, saying, what if, did you, was that an indication you wanted to or not? And I think, I think the way that we've all discussed keeping them separate. I, I would prefer to keep them separate and not have any confusion of. Who, who initiates it and keep those policies intact that we already have.
That makes perfect sense to me, and I think that would just be, that's important for the ombuds to have as part of the initial conversation. You know, you should be aware, there's a formal complaint process, the deadline is in ten days, there's a copy of the policy. You know, I can't, I can't extend that for you, but you know, I can help in other ways. That's part of the initial conversation, I agree.
The only thing I was wondering is, like, the, the word toll, maybe that's like a legal term, but like, uh, could we say extend?
Yes, that's a great, you're right, it is a legal term for extend.
Dr. Merrill's hand is up.
Um, I could envision, and maybe you can't write language for this, the employee goes to ombuds. Um, they must, uh, initiate a grievance. We, we administratively begin the grievance, but the employee goes back for counsel to ombuds. In the middle of grievance, back and forth, back and forth. I got information, I, I don't know what, it, it's almost like in a school, once we refer a discipline matter to law enforcement, we're out of it. Um, I don't know. I could see it conceivably happening the way employees like to move back and forth. I don't know, just a thought to leave with you guys.
Really good point.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point. I hadn't thought of that. It's not addressed in Loudon. Um, so what do you do? Let's say the, let's say the employee starts with the ombuds. Then the next day, without notifying the ombuds, files a formal complaint of discrimination. That triggers deadlines and reporting requirements, and then they go back to the ombud and say, hey, what's the status of my formal resolution? Um, I, I, I don't know how to address that in policy, other, maybe that's an example of the. The ombuds needs to be just crystal clear, and maybe have a handout for employees that if you choose to initiate this, a formal agreement, so I can't help you. Um, you know, and that would, maybe it's just operationally, addressed operationally rather than policy, that's just thought.
Yeah. Uh, okay, yeah, I mean, the ombuds person, once I refer you to grievance and you begin that process. I can't continue to talk with you, all that needs to say in channels. I mean, I could see them wanting to add to a grievance file because they go back to the ombuds and, and anyway. So, okay, I don't want to slow you up.
So we could, it could be handled operationally by the ombuds being clear, or if you like, as I think about it, it wouldn't be too difficult to add a sentence to say. Uh, upon initiation of a formal. Uh, complaint under another board policy, the ombuds will inform the employee that. That the ombuds can no longer assist with a matter or something like that. Do you think that's a good idea?
Yeah, if you think that doesn't defeat the purpose of the ombuds, but, but, yeah.
I don't feel like it does, like, I think, you know, that, I like the clear line there, um, so. And maybe we could refer to it as like closing the case or something like that, um, in that sentence. The, the back and forth concerns me, um.
Yeah, I, I agree, Sarah. The only thing I want to make sure of is. If, if the person is, has a grievance. That doesn't exclude them from talking to the ombuds about something else. Right? So I, I want to make sure it's not, hey, you, you're in grievance, you can't talk to them. It would be, you can't talk. On this subject matter, they could have another reason, right, for, for speaking to them, whatever it may be. I, I just want to make sure it's not like, oh, sorry, you're, you're now not able to speak to them at all until the closure. I believe it's, hey, you're, we're not going to allow the engagement of that subject while this matters in there. That's, I just want to make sure we, we distinguish the two.
Absolutely. Great. Alright, so we can work on a sentence for that, Neil can work on a sentence for that. Awesome. Alright, let's keep it rolling.
Just got a note to, to come up with something, so you want that to come back to you, or you want me to try to think something we can add now?
Maybe when it's like, I mean, I think what we'll do eventually is bring this to the policy committee, so I think as long as that sent, or I guess it's going to come to the board first, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So before it goes to the board.
So, okay for me to come up with a sentence or two to add, I think it would be at the end of section F here. And then just share it with you all, um, understanding it's going to go to the board as opposed to coming back for further discussion with the committee.
I think so. Is that alright with you?
Yeah.
We can always, we can always change it at the board table if you know what. Okay, I'll, I'll add something, basically just capturing the concept that once, once a formal complaint is initiated, the ombuds will advise on that. Complaint, yeah, but this is, therefore, as to that issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then after this, I think my editing is much lighter, so I'm not going to belabor it unless you have questions, we've got sections on, um. Uh, here's, here's actually the, uh. Ombuds not, doesn't accept any formal complaints or conduct investigations, I think that's really elsewhere. Uh, we've got audit, you know, cooperating audits, data collection. Yeah, the rest of the policy, these are just, um, you know, changes on terminology and references to the name of the district, I think.
Yeah, can we go back up to the data reporting portion? I just wanted to double check here.
We changed a quarter, uh, annual to quarterly reporting. Under section I, after your last committee meeting, that was one thing that was specifically requested.
Where does it say quarterly?
Uh, under section I.
Yeah, I, I see it says annual still.
I'm looking at the red line, I sent, I sent, I sent a red line right after, like, I think it was.
Oh, right after the last meeting, okay, yes, because we had discussed the reporting.
Should have it, and it was the only change I made, this changed annual to quarterly.
Awesome.
I'm, I'm glad.
Yeah, I think we're looking at the, at the version from before that meeting, but that was the change that was made, right?
That change was made, looks like there's a couple of knit, um, you know, stray, uh, periods there, some sort of type of corrections. I also did flag, um, a couple of other knits, um, that I'll go ahead and change, but I want to flag them for you. Um, Franklin, if you could, um, scroll to section H. On, um, in turn, involvement in internal audit, there are some references to Virginia that I still need to clean up here. You see down at the bottom, the Virginia Department of Labor, uh, and Industry, that should be the, let's go up a little, up. Uh.
Yep, right there.
And so in paragraph six, uh, the first paragraph six, you see down at the bottom of paragraph, there's references to the Virginia Department of Education, that will be. North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, Virginia Department of Labor and Industry, should be North Carolina Department of Labor. Um, and then, what else did I have there, uh? That's it on the knit corrections. I also have one other thought, you know, of a, of a clarifying change that we can make in the same section. Uh, which should be at the end of. The first sentence here, I believe, unless otherwise required by law. The ombud shall not intervene or participate in formal complaints or investigations, it goes on to say, including. Uh, lawsuits. But no, I'm sorry, it's the next sentence, the second sentence, the ombud shall neither, um, intervene nor participate in any complaints which are the subject of. A special education mediation be processed during the litigation or other pending. Mediation, um, or proceeding. And I thought it would be helpful at the end of that sentence to add, except to the extent required by law. Again, just because it's possible that, um, uh, the ombuds could be subpoenaed to testify in court hearing, for example, it's unlikely. But if that happens, um, we can't say that, that that person will not participate. Any concerns with adding that, except to the extent required by law at the end of the second sentence in H?
No.
Okay.
Great.
I'll add those in addition to the new sentence we just discussed.
Great. Will, did you have, did you have something?
I, I do, but I see Dr. Merrill's hand's been up for a while, so I, I was gonna wait till.
I think that's from before.
Oh. Okay, no, okay, so the, the one question I did have, uh, Sarah, was back on where you said annual. Uh, in, in the.
Or it's down.
We have, yeah, uh, I think it's section.
Almost the last thing, yeah.
Yeah, data collection and reporting, it does say quarterly basis in the version that's attached. Um, he- here's the question I have is. Um. If something's coming up. Or there's a concern that they see or something that happens, I would hope they're going to come to us before a quarter. Like, if it is that significant that they are saying, I am seeing X, Y, Z. I have a recommendation on this, that they don't have to wait to a quarterly basis to tell us that they would come forward. Before that, um, I, that's my only concern is it, it kind of like boxes this quarterly, but.
I think that last sentence is supposed to address that.
That's it, that's right, the, the idea is the quarterly reports the bare minimum, and then the next sentence is supposed to say. Notwithstanding the requirement of quarterly report, there you go.
Okay.
Yeah, if there's a major issue, the board needs to know, then the board needs to know immediately.
And I think that this is just a place where I see that division reference instead of district.
Yes, thank you, that was also on my knit.
Okay, yeah, that.
Direction as well.
District, okay.
That was in the division to districts.
Yeah, now, yeah, now that you've said that, Sarah, now I, now that. Sentence makes a different meaning, because I was thinking.
Yeah.
Within, within the organization of this versus coming back to the district, okay, that makes sense. Perfect.
Awesome, um. Does anybody have anything else on the policy? Feels like in a good place.
Um, so I, I do have a couple of questions, generic questions, and, um. I, I just, I just want to make sure how this would work, so. You know, the ombudsman comes in and they are. In, in place, they're, they're doing, you know, these things that we've, we've given them. And all, uh, the ability to talk to our staff and everyone. And somebody. Uh, somebody wants to file a grievance against them. So that would fall under our grievance policy, who in that case would handle. A grievance against the ombuds. In that case.
Uh, that's a good question, that, let me check your, um, it depends on the nature of the complaint, for one thing, because you have.
Yeah.
Different policies, right, discrimination, sexual harassment are handled separately from ordinary employment grievances. But, uh, let me pull up the, um. General employee grievance policy to see what it would say there. That could be seventeen. Seventeen fifty, policy seventeen fifty. So the, um. Seventeen fifty, which is your generic employee grievance policy. Again, not for, uh, claims of racial discrimination or, um, sexual harassment or the like. Uh, would say that the grievance would be sent to the. Uh, Chief Human Resources Officer Designee initially. Uh, let's see. Right, and then, uh, and then the level one. Section, the Chief Human Resources Officer would forward the grievance to the official whose decision is the subject of the grievance. I see, because this contemplates appeals of decisions, like, most griev- formal grievance policies are, are intended to just correct. Erroneous decisions, not to give you the ability to complain. So under this policy, there would have to be a written decision the ombuds had made, maybe, maybe, let's say for the sake of discussion, it's. I can't assist you with your formal, uh, discrimination complaint. That's not outside my role, and they want to grieve that decision. Then it would go first to the ombuds, uh, for a level one discussion. Then to the superintendent or designee for level two, and then the board at level three.
So, so just to make sure, Neil, so HR would be the person that would do the investigation on the.
No, no, they just, uh, HR would only, um, receive the grievance and forward it to the official whose decision is the subject of the grievance. And then the level, so that your, this is just again in your general employee grievance policy, it conveys a three-step review. Normally you would start with the, the, you know, the, the, at the point of decision, so if it's a, uh, department head, it's made a decision. The level one conferences with the department head, if it's a principal's decision, the level one conferences with the principal. And then the appeal goes to the superintendent, and then the, or designated, and the final appeal goes to the board.
Okay, so, so maybe my confusion, Neil, is if an employee. Is filing a grievance against the ombuds, so they say, I, I'm making it up, they could say, I feel like. They retaliated against me and told somebody something, or, you know, wha- whatever it is, whatever their complaint is. Who would be the target person that would investigate that, because they, their reporting structure is not. Not, I mean, that's my confusion of.
Got it.
And the other thing in my back of my mind is, it seems like we have to have an appeal option to come to the board as well. So this is why I'm trying to think through, how would that work if somebody had a specific complaint about ombud and how it would work?
Yeah, let me, let me try to sort of, that, um, address this a different way, so thi- this policy that I'm looking at right now, your employee grievance policy. Is, is, is not a discrimination or retaliation policy, we have to look at other policies to, to see what the mechanism there. This would just be, um, a written complaint about a final administrative decision. That violates a specific law, policy, or rule, or has an adverse effect on the conditions of employment. So if someone is saying the ombuds, I, I'm concerned here, the ombud's decision. Whatever formal decision the ombuds made violates a specific law or policy or adversely affects me in my employment, they can file a grievance under this policy. That grievance would, the process for the grievance is, it's, there's not an outside investigator. It goes first to, this is the same approach you have for student parent grievances. It goes first to a meeting with the, with the person about whom the concern's been raised, in this case, the ombuds. You have a meeting.
But who does that, Neil? Who, who's the physical person?
The, the ombud, this would be the step one, would be a meeting, in this case, it'd be a meeting with the ombuds, if the concern were about, uh, principal's decision, the step one meeting would be. The principal.
Let me try again, let me try again, Neil, so. If, if I'm an employee and I have a concern about the ombudsman. One, who do I send that to? And then two, who, who coordinates setting up that meeting to have that discussion?
Gotcha, so I, 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 I get, I get there, I have to walk through two or three policies, right, so this policy then.
Well, we don't, Neil, we don't have to go through it here, I would just, if, if we could just have maybe something offline that you share on. On how that would work, I, I'm just, I'm just really just wanting to make sure of knowing. In the event there is something brought up, you know, and say. In the event there is something brought up, you know, and say, I I'm gonna make it up, for example, say it's someone from HR that opens it up. And HR is the group that initiates this, you know, how does that work? Yeah, yeah, say that some, an HR person goes to.
Yeah.
Ombuds and then has a complaint. How how does that work? But that that's the kind of thought I'm trying to get around is.
Yeah, I can explain. I can summarize it. I mean, it the the HR rule under this policy is extremely limited. It's just a, it's just to to cue the complaint to the right person. So the griev- grievance and employee grievance in this policy gets directed to the chief of HR, who forwards it to the person whose decision is at issue. Um, so it would just, it's a matter of directing them to, in this case, it would be directed to the ombuds. Try to have a meeting, see if you can resolve it. If not, the ombuds sends a written decision, uh, then the person can appeal to the superintendent and then to the board. But that's only for. These appeals of decisions, if you're talking about bullying, harassment, or discrimination, that's another policy, which is all subject to a lot more legal.
So Neil, Neil, the, I guess, I guess I'll give you one more example, then we should move on, because I don't want to. You know, use the whole time on this, but say that the the issue is. Uh, the ombuds decides that I can't help you with this issue.
Yeah, that's what was mine.
And so now they they, the person says, I want to file a grievance because they should be able to help me with this.
Right. My, as my example, I started with that would go to the ombuds first to see if they can resolve the issue between them. If not. The ombud sends a decision, you know, a a letter or email after the meeting. Um, and then if the employee is not satisfied with that, can appeal to the superintendent, and then appeal to the board. So if it ultimately comes to the board, and the board could say. The ombuds got it right or wrong in terms of whether the ombuds could or could not assist.
Okay, okay, thank you for for.
But then, just just to clarify too, that's only for appeals of decisions. That aren't discrimination, harassment, bullying. That's a separate process there. Um, and that does have an outside independent investigation component. So the ombud is accused of engaging in saying racial discrimination. Then that would be investigated by the designated investigator, which in the case of the ombuds, that would be. Because your your policy kind of spelled out who investigates what types of complaints. And let's see if the. I think this would fall under the policy lines. It says, if the alleged incident occurred outside of the jurisdiction of a principal. The Chief Human Resources Officer or Designee is the investigator. Unless the alleged perpetrator is the Chief Human Resources Officer, the Superintendent, or member of the board. So if there was a complaint that the ombuds engaged in. You know. Religious or or racial discrimination, for example, that would get investigated by. Chief Human Resources Officer or Designee. And then if there's appeals, you know, that there's a report and appeal opportunities eventually does get to board as well.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. I I um. I I I think I get it. I just, again, just wanted to make sure how this would physically work since we're putting something in that's not normal structure. So thank you, Neil, for going through that.
Okay. Um, Will, did you have anything else on the policy before we move to the staffing piece?
Um. No, I I I guess the only other question I had was. Uh, I saw it said policy seventy-nine sixty at the top. Is that where it would actually go, Neil, as? Seven thousand seventy-nine sixty, or do we need to? Under personnel?
Yeah, I think I think that's the number I I threw out there as an available um policy number. Let me, let me just confirm. It can go anywhere logical, but um I put it in the personnel series um. And seventy, what was the number again? Seventy-nine sixty? Yeah, that's the the next available uh policy number if you're going by times, as you seem to be.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
All right. Excellent. Okay, so um. The next thing, um, we talked about, maybe can I share my screen? Franklin. Let me bring up. Um, okay, so this is the overview document that we walked through last time. Again, it just pulls from Pasadena and mostly Pasadena, maybe a little bit of the Loudon. Um, where we go through what is the purpose of the office, what are the guiding principles? Um, what is the scope of work? This was also intended to help um draft a job description if we decide to go internal, which we do have a draft of a job description. Um, scope of work and responsibilities, and then qualifications. Um, which was a place where we um. Walked through some of these choices during the last meeting, and this is where we landed. Um. Essentially, like the biggies are like years of experiences in ombuds, conflict resolution mediation, or something similarly relevant with a track record of success. And then a bunch of like discretion, um, good at building relationships with people, able to synthesize information. Um, and then because we're using the um IOA um standards of practice, basically, that's what the top stuff is, um, knowledge of that. And then the preferred is past experience. Obviously, it would be amazing if we could find someone who had past experience doing this very thing. Um, or who was certified um in ombudsmanship. Um, or and or who. Understood K twelve environments. Um. The what the ombuds will not do, I don't think ended up in the job description, but for clarity, we just wanted to continue capturing that. Um, okay, and then cost and logistics. So um, uh, Dr. Merrill and I, I believe, uh, both. Went after this one, and so for contracted, what I did was. Went to a couple of these um databases and um larger listings of uh people who do contract ombuds work. Um, I spoke with um the heads of two different firms. Um, the low end here, um. The forty is including like a equivalent of a nonprofit discount because we are a public school district and. Um, you know, so they understand the funding issue. Um, and then the higher end was the other one. I spoke to these two. I also have some names of individuals. Um, so Andre, thank you for sending me a name. Um, I rather than like reach out to a bunch of individuals, I thought these folks. You know, have a set of people, and so we should just start there. Um, the. This, I think, is one of the advantages of the external model. Um, we should talk about the pros and cons of each, but essentially. Uh, these folks would be available as needed. Um, I don't think it's twenty-four seven, but it is a large number of hours. Um, in both cases, how it would work, it, one of them. You know, uh, you would be assigned two different ombuds, um, so that there's more coverage. Um, and then the other one, they have a set of ombuds. I don't think you get assigned a specific person. But it essentially means you have much, much more availability over the course of the day. Um. And. That's, that's that, um, in terms of these basics. Um. Uh, and so, Dr. Merrill, do you want to share about the in-house?
We, um, let's see, I'm just checking my mic. Am I live here?
Yep.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, we tried to look at a a a point with internal equity with some other positions and where this might sit and on a. On a fifty percent basis, we were at about four forty, forty-six thousand dollars for that. Uh, which is without benefits in retirement. Um, no title associated or or no schedule that we grabbed the title of, since this is a unique position. Um. But but so we're, I think we're in the ballpark with where you were in terms of the the lower nonprofits.
Yep. Yeah, and then this, I wasn't looking for this, but just to validate what you have there, if that's the fifty percent time. I saw that um Austin, Texas, and Atlanta Public Schools are both hiring um ombuds right now. And these, I don't believe, are the head of, they both have an office, I think, of multiple people. I don't think this is the head of the office, actually, but Austin listed the range as one nineteen to one forty-three. And um Atlanta listed it as one oh five to one forty-five. And those are actually like much larger districts. Their budgets are probably quite different than ours, but so. We're a smaller district. This is less, but um, yeah, that that um, one of the. Contract firms that I spoke with also said, like, this is, you know, you're talking about a roll over a hundred thousand. So we're a smaller district and that. That kind of lined up with that. Um. From what I heard, too. Um, and so we talked about that being twenty hours a week. Um, was there any other information? I have the job description, which I could pull up, but um. Any other? Information from your internal discussion?
Um. Uh, nothing meaningful to add uh today. I mean, and we do, we did rough out a job description, but I I think we have the the bones at this point.
Mm-hmm. Um. Yep. So. At this point, um, so that's, that's the range of what we're talking about for the role. Um, these two firms that I spoke to, I should say, also, the way they work is not on an hourly basis. So we talked about. Um, looking for somebody that was like hourly billing. Um, and. Neither of them operate like that. Um, and so it's, you know, it's a, it is on a sort of as-needed basis. Um, one of them. Offers a bunch of other functionality and a website and this kind of stuff to like help people self-service kind of solve problems if they can, and then if not. You can click on the thing that says, let me talk to a person. So that one's like more tech-enabled, and then the other one assigns you to, sounds like two ombuds. And has some assumptions about um. Um, you know, the number of hours and so forth. Um, and. I believe this is add-on and not included in the eighty-five thousand is they can also do like. Um, webinars and things. If there's common themes, um, they can help, uh, they can offer some things like that to staff. Um. So that's, I mean, that's the information about cost. I, you know. I think we should talk about. Whether. We want to propose one of those models, like, excuse me. If we want to like talk through right now, like what are the pros and cons um of internal versus external? Um, I think that could be helpful, and then I'm not sure if. If the committee is like clearly leading in one direction or another. Um, or whether we want to present both to the board. Just wanted to have a discussion about that.
I mean, so for me, Sarah, I. I think it's important for a person to know. Who it is, like, hey, I talked to our. District ombuds this person, and they were really great. They were very understanding, very empathetic. But if they're gonna call and it's gonna be whoever answers the phone, or it could be rolling, I think we lose some of that. Personal and ability to refer. Um, but I I mean, I'm okay with bringing it to the full board and letting the full board discuss, but just personally, I think. One of the aspects of this is people being able to, you know, employees being able to talk to each other and say, hey, my experience with this person was really good, and. I, you know, saying, hey, I I was able to do this, or they answered my questions. And I I think over time, it could be like you could, it's a service and it has tech stuff and all that. But it it feels like we need more personal. You know, this is the person that we're talking to, or these two people, or, you know, something like that. But that that's just my personal opinion, but. I I'm not against bringing it and seeing what the majority wants to do.
Yep, and I have more information too that each of those um companies provided about their different sort of models. Um, but I don't know, I wasn't clear on like if we're gonna pursue an RFP. This was a, like, let's level set on the general cost here, rather than like actually. Particular vendors. Um. Neil, is there, are there, in terms of like getting into the details of what each of them, those two provide?
Yeah. Well, there's, I mean, there's, I I'll leave it to you to decide the practical advantages and disadvantages. Independent contractors. There's a little more flexibility in how you structure the arrangement, and that, you know, we can build up this, about anything into a contract. So termination provisions could be very easy, you know, termination at will. For convenience, you decide you don't want to do this anymore, you want to go in-house, or your, the ombud isn't doing you any good, it's a waste of money, you can just. Terminate the contract. That's one advantage, whereas um, you know, if it's an employee, then there, you know. We would need to be careful about how the how the employment structure, and in theory, they could file an employment, an employee grievance if they were dismissed. That's one factor. Um, other than that, I think the policy would apply equally to independent contractor or employee. So. In in terms of all the stuff we talked about, the confidentiality and and everything, if there's really no, no difference, I think we manage that through the policy.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Um. And it may be also in terms of the contracted services that there are, you know, neither of these firms do the like hourly rate. Sort of thing, but it might be that if we started talking to individuals, um, that, you know, that they would do that. Um. So that is also.
And you, someone mentioned RFP, there's no requirement to bid for for this type of contract, service contract, but you certainly can. And and since there are no legal requirements, whatever sort of RFP you set up would be. You you can build it however you want and make the decision ultimately discretionary. You don't have to go with the lowest cost proposal or anything like that. So you, if. Soliciting uh bids or or informal proposals is purely discretionary, you can manage it however you want.
Okay, so if we were to say. Um, so we've got, you know, a job description. Um. Let's say we were to also take this, something along these lines, or the other overview document, and. Um, you know, we compile a list of external vendors. Um, or external ombuds, folks, right? We could um. We could potentially send this out to them and say, we're interested in. You know. And are you interested in an hourly contract? Like, how much would you charge us for that? We could do that in sort of a less, not a formal RFP, but we could. Send something to a range of people, get proposals from them, and then. Bring those to the board to decide or. Uh, give those to Dr. Merrill to make a recommendation to the board. We could do something along those lines.
I can, I I would, I would call it sort of an invitation for proposals or something like that initially. So you, you know, you could just sort of cast a wide net. We're interested in people who provide the service, what you have to offer. And then you can decide if you want to do some sort of competitive. Bid process, say, thanks for your proposals. Here's what we, what we want. What's your best price on 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 the on on this specific proposal? Or alternatively, you could say, here's our policy, here's our overview. What, you know, what what pricing can you offer as produced specific services, either way it's fine.
Mm-hmm. Will, Andre, what are your thoughts about this?
About uh the contracting versus employee part or?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like we don't, we're not like. Are. Like. What do you think would be helpful for the board to make a decision here? I I think we probably should decide first whether to go in-house or contract.
Yeah.
Make that decision. So what do you think would be helpful for the board to be able to make that decision?
Um. Well, since Neil has has the policy that allows us to do both. Um, I'm just curious, Dr. Merrill, if you have an opinion on this or concerns, since you would have way more experience in this than we would on. Whether we should consider um. One versus the other. Um. Just wanted to hear your thoughts on it.
Well, um. The the um. The connection between information, evaluation, value of the position. On a contract versus employee can be can be more problematic on a on an external kind of contract, not in terms of. Ending it the way Neil has talked about, but how does the board get feedback about uh how well it's going? Is it a direct channel to the board? I have seen auditors. Report directly to school boards alongside superintendents, but they have their own channel, and they are an employee of the district also. So it can work that way, but it's easier. A little easier for the board to communicate and and set expectations when it's. In the organization as an employee a- and. You know, one job description has it reporting to the superintendent. It could also report directly to the board. Um. Contract external, I always worry a little bit about, there's more arms length and a little harder to to reach out and get back. Um, and you lose some of the. Um. Connectivity, I guess, with contract folk. But. It either can work, so I'm not guiding you much or or telling you that. I I have seen direct report to the board's work, okay? As long as you guys among yourselves understand how you're gonna get information, and is there a lead among the board, or is it full board meetings or whatever?
Yeah. It, sorry, go ahead, Will.
No, I was just gonna say. Based on that, Dr. Merrill, I. The way I feel, Sarah, is. Committing to saying we're doing this, I. committing to saying we're doing this, I think I lean towards us, us hiring them, and that way we have the continuity of us, of a known person, the feedback, and we can work together with this process to improve it, and because I, I think about it, and I think about in the private sector on, on contractors, et cetera, where this week it could be this person, and then, hey, sorry, it's now this person, or, you know, um, some challenges that you could have with that. Um, and I definitely want to make sure from my perspective as a, a district, we're serious on this, and, you know, if we see value in this, we continue it. If not, we make adjustments. But, I mean, that's where I feel at this point, Sarah, from.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
A quick point on that, I just wanted to be clear that you, you can, in an independent, with an independent contractor relationship, you could specify a specific individual with broad services. It doesn't have to be whoever's available, that's the model that Sarah.
That's one of the firms, right? Like, one of these firms is that, another is, it's these two people, and then there's just individuals who may, you know, we may be able to.
So you can make that an expectation, you know, if, if you were interested in an independent contractor, we need to know who that person is. Have even require an interview process or something, that so you know exactly who you're getting, and make that the designated person, you can make that an expectation. But I'm not disputing anything Dr. Merrill said about, you know, it's easier to keep tabs on and manage and supervise your employee, that is true, I think, in general. So, um, in the sense that, you know, if, if, and we ha- have something in the policy that said the superintendent and board will will not, uh, directly intervene the, the way the ombuds is interacting with employees, come to them confidentially, but you will have oversight and, and feedback as to performance. And so if it's in-house, Dr. Merrill may, or even next superintendent may have a better sense of, I'm not sure this person's really meeting our expectations and can offer input to the board. It's a little harder to tell that with somebody who has an office elsewhere and is just having remote consultations with employees.
Mm-hmm.
That is a good point.
Yep. Yeah, I think, I think the reason that I am still leaning contract is because I think, uh, it underscores the like independence piece, like this is, this is out, like, this is very outside of the control of the district in that way, which is a good thing, and, um, it's not somebody with like pre-existing relationships, which may give you a feeling one way or another about whether they're really gonna be impartial to you. Uh, you know, it's, it's none of those things. And the piece that it's like, we're trying to find somebody who's like kind of highly experi- who is highly experienced to work fifty percent time. I'm, I'm just concerned about finding somebody, like, uh, and the, and the trade-offs we might need to make in terms of quality for applicants to that role, um. You know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to trying it first. I, I, I wouldn't want us to compromise too much on their skills and experience, um. Cause I think we could find that, you know, more likely externally, um. I just think they're being good at the job is so important, so I, I just don't know what we would get.
Those are good points too, I did, I wanted to just add, like, as an independent contractor, I, I do notice sometimes it is helpful for me when I interact with staff, when I'm investigating something, or it is kind of helpful to be able to, they understand, I'm an, I'm an, I'm a lawyer, I work for an outside law firm, I'm not directly, you know, uh, supervised by the superintendent or board. That is kind of helpful in the sense that there's a little bit of independence there. Um, sometimes that, that can really be helpful in trying to, you know, tease information out of people that are worried about it being reported up the chain or something like that.
Yep. Shoot, and I didn't realize we were going over you all, I'm so sorry, um. Okay, um, can we briefly talk about, do, do we think these things are like ready to bring to the board in an upcoming meeting, or do we want to have one more meeting where we sort of prep for that and talk about what, what we want to bring? I'm inclined to the latter, but what do you think?
I'm good with one more meeting.
Yeah. To just see the finalized, everything finalized, and that way we can, like you said, Sarah, maybe, maybe if you could just get a list of what we want to recommend, like, hey, we want to recommend this, you know, which model, he- here's our pluses and minuses, and then, um, what decision we're looking for the board. And I think, I think if we have that, that will make the meeting with the full board much smoother.
Cool, yes. So are you cool if I draft something before our next meeting and then?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
If that's okay, I mean, we can also recreate it during that meeting, that's fine, but.
No, no, I, I think, I think you facilitating it, Sarah, would, would help, and that way it can get all of us thinking around the same things, like, oh, yeah, I see you put this, should we include this? And that way, you know, if there's anything else, we should include as thoughts, um, because the hopes is we can facilitate the discussion and we, um, share how we came to these recommendations.
Yep.
So.
Okay. I'll work on something and we will come back together one more time, just to plan for the board meeting.
Sounds great.
Thanks, y'all. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second it, all in favor?
All right.
All right.